All right, we are now live recording. I think we should get started at seven thirty two. I think everyone's here. So. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the village. Twenty second, twenty twenty one. We. If everyone could rise to the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence for the hundred and three police officers killed so far year to date. I pledge allegiance to the flag. For the United States of America.
To the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation. Under God.
Indivisible, liberty and justice. Thank you all. Take good evening again. First thought this evening is a public hearing on introductory local law five. It's to entertain public comment on introductory local law five of twenty twenty one. The purpose of the law is to restrict and reprioritize transient and guest unit housing options and promote the public health, safety and welfare. By amending chapter three ten of the village code entitled zoning. And the zoning map to provide locations for bed and breakfasts and boarding houses. That maintain the character of the existing village and are appropriate for such uses. This matter has been classified as a type one action of the secret and the public notice is printed in the Times Herald record on April. So before we hear from the public, I just want to read some comments. That we received from the village engineer to the planning board that we were copied on that state the following and what I'd like to do is. For each of these points. We can briefly discuss as a board how we want to answer or address any of those comments. Is that okay with you, Kelly? Okay, thank you.
Yes, the planning board also discussed it at their meeting last, uh, meeting last night. So a comment letter is coming from them that does request some changes be made as well.
Very good. So I figured this would be a good opportunity before we could hear from the public for us to openly discuss. These comments from the engineer and how we might want to address it as well. So number one, the overlay district boundaries follow lot lines on the proposed zone map. That's just a statement. So we can move on to number two. Which states the proposed overlay district includes mostly properties in the HB, LC and CR zones along with thirty two and some along Smith Bow Road. They also recommend adding a few areas that are designated CR and HB along route thirty two that are not included in the overlay. Specifically between Rose Lawn Road and the Neiman property and opposite Woodbury Heights as well as opposite Still Street and Smith Globe Road. Anyone have any thoughts on that? Comments?
I can tell you that one of the comments that the planning board had was that the. They thought that the overlay district might be too large and to really restrict it so that it would only have frontage on route thirty two. There are several properties that were included in the draft overlay district that go down the side streets but are still listed. In those districts that she states.
Okay, any board members have any thoughts on that? Or do you want to just continue moving forward? Okay. Number three, it is their understanding that some of the concerns related to the B and B operations with parked cars and increased traffic in residential areas. To that end, they believe it makes sense to include in the HB, LC and CR areas along with thirty two that experience high traffic volumes is located for B and Bs. They also suggest considering including properties with large lot area, two acres or more. It could be very attractive for a rural quaint B and B aesthetics while also providing a buffer amount for neighboring properties for traffic and parking concerns.
I can tell you that on that point, the planning board agreed that. They thought that the properties that were included in the district should have a minimum of two acres.
Would that exclude most of the properties along thirty two?
I'm not sure. I I can have that for you by your next meeting as to which properties then it would actually include. But it might exclude some of the ones that are just long and skinny with a little bit of frontage.
We have to consider both sides of that, I imagine. Anyone else before we move on to the next point? Okay, by repealing being the uses in the bulk tables, the code criteria regulates this type of use is the definition that states. A privately owner occupied dwelling in which at least one and not more than five rooms are offered for transient overnight lodging and breakfast is offered to such occupant. No public restaurant shall be maintained. It's their understanding that enforcement of owner occupancy has been a difficulty for the building inspector. They recommend consideration with counsel. On how this could be addressed and if there are any bulk criteria that should regulate development of this use.
So to weigh in on that, one thing that was discussed was the. Potential to include. The way I wrote it was more of as if it was a condition for a resolution, but. They're basically owing to the difficulty of enforcing the code mandate, the mandatory requirement that something be owner occupied. That the owner has to demonstrate by proof that he files with the building department. And reviewed by the planning board attorney as to its efficiency that they have, you know, abandoned whatever other residence they say that they have. And have established a residency at the location of the bed and breakfast. And that they have to file either that the driver's license has been reissued with the new village of Woodbury address. That the postal authorities at a prior address have been notified and that's only if they do have a prior address. That the voter registration has been changed to this Woodbury address. Yeah, both of those things because for driver's license, sometimes you can just write it on the back. Like I could write on the back right now that I live in Brooklyn. Something like that, not that I'm saying that you should or that that's appropriate or legal or anything like that.
Well, it also says you have to notify DMV within, I think, ten days or something if you do do that.
So there is discussion about including some regulations along those lines. More than just having the definition, but actually stating some further regulation.
Tara, you about to say something? Did I hear your voice?
No, no, no. But Kelly, you said further regulation. How?
Sort of like you guys have. Three, ten, thirty nine point. X. So it would sort of be just an additional paragraph where it's not just maybe limited to the definition. It would. Unless I could word it properly. Otherwise, it would just be a new code section, include a new code section saying these are additional regulations, you know, it has to have a minimum of two acres. Owner occupancy has to be demonstrated by A, B and C and whatever else the board wants, but just like another section. So it's not just limited to the definition.
Okay, next item. They recommend that the planning board consider if there are any other restrictions or regulations they may want to include for this type of use like security lighting, outdoor amenities, restrictions on busing and signage. I imagine the planning board letter will have some comment to that effect.
It well, I didn't get to draft it today, but that's why I know what they said. So they did say that they would like no outdoor amenities. But that's something for the board to consider.
Okay. Thoughts, anybody?
What would you consider amenity?
Well, that's a good point. So the bed and breakfasts that have been reviewed thus far, outdoor amenity would be. That the guests would not be able to use a pool. The guests would not be able to sit outside on the deck. They wouldn't be able to use. One of the backyard fires, anything like that, that pretty much their stay would be restricted to the interior of that dwelling. But certainly the board can put whatever it thinks is appropriate. You know, maybe you want to allow them on the deck, but you don't want to allow them in the pool or whatever the property may have.
Anyone else? Okay. Within the last two years, there've been two applications before the planning board for B and Bs that were never approved. The law does not appear to provide an exception for applications having pre having proceeded to a certain extent. Before the planning board, nor does it provide a grandfather exception for existing B and Bs which are outside the overlay district boundaries of which there is only one as far as I know.
Yeah.
Anything?
So they didn't have any recommendation that there should be a grandfathering. They were fine. With the one that is existing, it would be considered legally preexisting, nonconforming. So it would be able to be continued. Until, you know, they try and change the use or expand beyond the use and then that would have to.
Right.
Comply with the code at that time.
I remember we talked about that specific case before. With regard to this local law. Okay. It is unclear if the law is intended to capture rentals like Airbnb or VRBO. These websites act as an online marketplace of bedroom apartment or home rentals that allow owners to lease their dwellings at their convenience. It's their opinion, they they are similar. Excuse me, it's 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 their opinion, these are similar, but not exactly the same as a whole property designated B and B, which offers amenities and breakfast served. If these are to be restricted by the overlay district, they suggest that they provisioned B and B. Pies to include them.
So the law wasn't intended to address Airbnbs or VRBOs. But that would be a separate law that that you would take a look at if that's something that you're interested in and where you think those should be.
Okay.
Unless you wanted to incorporate them into this, and I think that there would be. Some additional regulations that would be included as well.
Anyone? And last item, which I believe we already did, they suggested referring the law to the building department for their comment. We did that already, right, Jess?
I believe so, but I'll double check tomorrow.
Let's just double check on that. All right. So with those comments from the engineers read, why don't we go out to public comment? I'll go down the list that I have here in the order that I see it. That's Zuma's, anything? Brandon Calori?
No, no, thank you, man.
Thank you, Chris Gerber.
Mr. Mayor, just like to add of the two, uh, two. Applications that were before the planning board, one has been denied for failure to play replenish escrow. And the second application has never returned to the planning board after after being asked to provide further. Proof of residency. So they're not being pursued anymore.
All right, thanks, Chris. Elon?
No, thank you.
Kate Luciani? Mrs. Hunter?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, Martha?
No, thank you.
Ray Hernandez?
No, thank you.
Mr. Andor, Mrs. Kraus? Okay.
Hi there. Yes, actually, Tim, Robin, sorry, sorry for the delay.
No worries.
I, first of all, I appreciate the work that went into putting this extensive law together. Um, I don't know who all was involved, but but thank you, the village board. I'm guessing certainly Kelly. So. Thank you for that. Um, I do, I agree with some of the. Comments from the planning board. So I'll look at that, you know, at another time, but. Um, my initial reaction, not reaction really was. First of all, again, thank you for revisiting, keeping bed and breakfast in Woodbury. I think they would, if done correctly. And and maintained, you know, would add an asset to Woodbury. So thank you again for for even looking at it again and coming up with other possibilities. Um, I would like to see them all remain owner occupied. I think there's more of a control that way. Uh, if they're actually on the premises, particularly if something goes wrong. My understanding is Airbnb is already prohibited, actually throughout the state. So I would say leave them prohibited. Because an awful lot of those have been popping up illegally. I would offer suggestions for possibly one acre or more. Uh, at each location, preferably more, but at least one acre to accommodate parking. And, you know, just possibly if there's a patio, they can possibly sit on the patio. I mean, again, but whatever the board decides. But, you know, it's a little less restrictive than. Not having, you know. Certainly adequate space. Um, I I agree with maximum of, it says limited in the law about limited five bedrooms for B and B. I would say, you know, I'm not playing semantics, but would it be a maximum of five bedrooms, you know, limited sounds like. A different connotation to me. I don't know that your learned scholars, I'm sure would know better than I. Um, just want to throw that out amenities, you know, I wouldn't want to penalize the people staying there if there is a pool. Or, um, you know, as I said, a nice patio, possibly a fire pit if it's done legally, you know. It's a night I've stayed at bed and breakfast, you know, so those are the types of amenities that I personally enjoy. You know, when I go, so I wouldn't want to deny anybody else the possibility. Um. And I would just really say, look at the route thirty two corridor. I did look at the, well, first of all, I would. Uh, I would throw out, I'm sorry, the SPLs because forty of them were commercial, religious, wholly exempt. Uh, one was actually town hall, another one was Mario's. I mean, that needs to be looked at if you're going to do the SPLs. I I would.
One was the gazebo.
Yeah. So. It's my turn. So anyway. I would, I would nix the SPLs and just go with the areas perhaps. Uh, either along the route thirty two corridor, there are several. Properties that would outside like on Rose Lawn, etc., that would lend itself to a bed and breakfast. I wouldn't. You know, look at it again, whatever the board decides, you know, you decide, but. Um, just a couple of things for you to think about some more. As if your heads aren't spinning, but thank you for the time.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Neil?
And I I would send further, I would like.
You are on there.
I mean, when we went through the SPL, so there were some on there that were, you know, historical society building. And stuff, but.
Just so the board knows, I did put those in there knowing what some of them were, but should in the future. Ownership change or anything like that. I was including them for their location. I'm sorry, Neil, please keep going.
The only other thing that I would suggest in addition to what Robin has. It is I would consider going in one block off from route thirty two. I would consider, you know, a long route, the frontage on route thirty two, but also consider some of the side streets one block in. Like Elm, like for instance, on Elm Street. And places like that, I think, have some suitable. Buildings that would lend themselves to a bed and breakfast. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Neil. Teresa Longo.
Hi, everyone. Um, I want to say thank you for putting the Cinco de Mayo event on the agenda.
We're not up to public comment on agenda items. We're just, this is the public. No, no worries. This is the public hearing for introductory. Excuse me. For the Airbnb law. We'll get to that in just a second.
Oh, sorry.
No worries. Okay, Tracy? And Ray Hernandez?
No, you did that.
You asked already. No, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tracy. And at this point, if there's anybody that I missed, please speak up now. Okay, very good. So just earlier this afternoon, actually late in the afternoon, we got the re county GML response. So I want to read their comments for the record. The Department of Planning has received the above referenced local law and has found no evidence that significant intermunicipal or countywide impacts would result from its approval. We come, we commend the board for modifying. The initial idea set forth in introductory local law eleven of twenty twenty, reviewed by planning in October twenty twenty. To remove bed and breakfasts from all districts. The proposed B and B overlay district encompasses areas where bed and breakfasts are appropriate and could potentially spur local business support. We'd like to offer the following advisory comment. Zoning map update. In order to ensure that the village of Woodbury zoning map is current and accurate, please notify the planning department as soon as possible upon approval or modified approval of this action. County recommendation is approval. So that was nice of the county. We we got that earlier today, as I said, and the comments are very favorable for us. So with the public comments made and the record. Excuse me, the. Letter from the county read into the record can have a motion in a second to close the public hearing and accept written comment until Friday, April thirtieth, twenty twenty one to close the business four P M.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, trustee Bjork for the motion. Trustee Graziano with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Very good. Okay, now we'll move on to public comment on agenda items only. Why don't we go right out to Teresa Luongo and let you go first and say interrupt the people for.
Okay. Um, so again, I want to say thank you for putting the Cinco de Mayo event on the agenda. We would very has planned in great detail on how to conduct this event safely. And we would like to work together to help our local businesses and in the footsteps of Monroe. And the past outdoor dining events, we would, you know, greatly appreciate the opportunity to follow suit and have a wonderful outdoor event for Woodbury as well.
Okay, thank you, Teresa. Uh, Mr. Or Mrs. Kraus?
No, thank you.
Okay. I assume that's a no for Neil as well?
Yep.
Beth Zumas?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Brandon Calori. Chris.
No, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Brandon. Oh, was that Chris? All right, Elon?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
I was a no, thank you. You were really broken up there. Okay, Mrs. Hunter?
Just a question on the, what is, does? What does Monroe do with the street closures in regards to serving alcohol publicly on the streets with the. Restaurants are supposed to serve alcohol within their building. Are we gonna, do they do something different that we, we're gonna follow? I was just curious about that, being at a Cinco de Mayo. And, you know, I might want to have a margarita or two on the street and I want to make sure that this is allowed.
Well, we can't, I can't comment or only because I don't know what about what Monroe does, but I imagine Kelly could comment on what we could do. Or should do.
Yeah, I I can't comment on on what Monroe does, either the town or the village. Certainly, we would have to take a look at what the exact restrictions are in the state for permitting. Alcohol consumption outside, obviously, outdoor restaurants, that you are permitted to have a glass of wine at a table that's associated with a restaurant. Something like a private event. I'm not sure off the top of my head. I would have to look.
Okay, I was just curious about that and, um, um, I'll save my rest of my comments for later. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for your, Martha?
No, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ray Hernandez?
Not at this time. Thank you.
All right, Tracy Maggio?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Tracy. Names are moving around. So again, if I missed anybody, please let me know now. Okay, we will move on to administrative business. Thank you, everybody. Can I please have a motion in a second to accept receipt of the minutes of the meeting held April eighth, twenty twenty one?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jacomaza and trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Approval of abstract need a motion in a second to approve abstract twenty two containing vouchers two zero one, seven, seven, eight through two zero one, nine, zero, three totaling two hundred seventy thousand, five hundred thirty two dollars and eight cents.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Graziano with the motion, trustee Bjork with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. How about I? Delinquent water bills re levy, looking for a motion in a second to approve the resolution for the levy of seven hundred forty six delinquent water bills. From the consolidated water fund that totals one hundred twenty eight thousand, nine hundred sixty one dollars and eighty one cents. It's a complete list on file in the village clerk's office. Trustee Jacomaza with the motion. Thank you. Trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Now, what I Desiree Roll call, please?
Mary Egan?
Hi.
Trustee Burke?
Hi.
Trustee Jacomoza?
I.
As soon as it came out, I knew it was wrong. Sorry. Trustee Gomez.
Hi.
Trustee Graziano.
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Looking for a motion in a second to approve the resolution for the levy of twenty six delinquent water bills from Water Number Six Fund, because Andrew Park. The totals twelve thousand, nine hundred ninety two dollars and seventeen cents. Again, complete list is on file in the village clerk's office. Trustee Gomez with the motion. Thank you. Trustee Bjork with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? And I would add, there's roll call.
Um, Mayor Egan?
Hi.
Trustee Bjork? Trustee Jacomaza?
I.
Trustee Graziano?
Right, or I?
Miss Jesus.
I was so excited to get the name right. Trustee Gomez.
Hi.
Okay, so we move on to old business. So we have a revised zone change request for Highland Mill Center Lakeside Affiliates. So by my count, this is number three with regard to attempts for this. Um. We all were here last year when we discussed this and we had a public hearing. Um, it didn't go well for the applicant, so he's trying again. Kelly, why don't you give us? Any changes in this application and anything we need to know so that we can discuss it?
Sure, um, it's substantially the same. If the board remembers, they're seeking the placement of the senior housing overlay district over several properties and also correcting some encroachments with some lot line changes. That's what they're proposed. They're seeking eighty four units. One of the changes that I think the board would be interested in is that they have reoriented the buildings and the entrance has been moved north. Uh, so it's further away from Timber Ridge Road. I think that was where some of the concerns were. Um, that's mostly, I mean, there's other little smaller changes. But for the big ones, as long as the board is still familiar with the application. Um, the last petition was withdrawn as the mayor indicated the public hearing had not gone well, so they are seeking it. They're seeking trying to go forward with it again with some modifications made to it.
There's less units in this plan though, right? Last time it was ninety six.
Last time it was ninety, it fluctuated because they had asked for ninety six and then I think it went down and then they went back up. So between the last, the latest petition, this one, I believe is less than that.
Before it went to ninety six, they were going to do one building at a time. So it was half that.
Yeah.
And then it jumped and.
And then the petitions, if you remember. Were not clear and then they were asking for different. Portions of different parcels to be in different zones. So it's been made more straightforward.
Okay.
But they're still asking for parcels to be pulled into the senior dip overlay, right?
Yes, yes.
They would have to in order to do the project.
Right, they would, they would need the assignment or the designation of senior housing overlay. But for example, I think part of the, um, the mobile home park property. It encroaches, so they're still proposing to correct some of those encroachments and correct the zoning designation for those encroachments.
Anything else, Tara?
No.
Okay, great. Any other board members? Okay, so Kelly, in order for us to move forward, if we were so inclined, we would need to establish another escrow account, correct?
They have the Taxpayer Protection Act escrow. Um, I have spoken with the attorney for the petition. Right now he's looking not to submit the actual application to the planning board. The planning board can review this through. Your referral to them. But just so Desiree is clear, I would think that that would still be charged to that escrow so that the charges are not. Falling on the taxpayers. I also did inform the attorney that there are several. Uh, zoning changes that they should take a look at specifically and obviously your engineer will and we will as well that may impact this project such as your ARB law, your water quality law. Their water quality protection overlay district law, things like that, that they should take into account or make sure that they have taken into account.
Yeah, there's definitely been some new laws since the last time they appeared before us. And all right, well, then, um. I guess the next thing to do would be to move forward and get it on the agenda so that we could discuss it further and we can hear from the applicant directly, unless anyone has any objections.
Well, I think as long as the board, you know, acknowledges receipt of the petition, you acknowledge receipt of the escrow. And then you can refer the application to the planning board. Last time, as the board knows, this application has to go through seeker, they went through a lengthy seeker process that the planning board served as lead agency for. If the board is so inclined, you can also state that you have no objection to the planning board. Keeping that role, maintaining that role as lead agency. And then I would say you should also refer it to the engineer and the building department.
Very good. Okay, then let's make that so and move on.
What she said.
Yes, exactly. Okay, so we move on to new business. First item on new business is the we are Woodbury Cinco de Mayo celebration on May fifth. So we are Woodbury along with Jorge of Jorge's Kitchen and Alfredo of Viva Mexican would like to collaborate with the village of Woodbury on a Cinco de Mayo event. They stated in their letter to us that they understand the. They stated in their letter to us that they understand the risks of COVID and wanted to discuss their plans with us. Trustee Gomez and myself met with representatives of We Are Woodbury on Tuesday, April thirteenth. We discussed their request, they reiterated what they had put in their letter, and included in that, included in that discussion were some guidelines they think should be followed. So here are the bullet points, May fifth, between five-thirty and seven-thirty with the road closure of Valley Ave at Route thirty-two between the hours of five PM and eight PM, that's when the events, that's when they'd like to have the event. They proposed two separate seedings using signup genius, which I'm assuming is an app for reservations. They would place all the tables no closer than six feet apart, there would be limited seating. Tables would be sanitized between each seating, they would perform temperature checks as patrons come in. Patrons will have to sit for the duration of the event as opposed to standing and walking around. Masks will be worn unless seated, unless, excuse me, unless eating. Both Jorge and Alfredo have generously offered to donate a mariachi band, excuse me, a mariachi band for the occasion. We are Woodbury is planning a Mother's Day basket raffle to help offset those costs and will also be providing a DJ. They requested, as we, as we know, that this event be discussed on tonight's agenda, so with all of that said, I'll open it up to the board.
Eric, and just to clarify, you said from Valley Avenue to Route thirty-two?
No, at Route thirty-two is what I said.
Valley Avenue doesn't intersect with Route thirty-two.
Then I have that wrong.
Yes.
Okay.
Jesus?
Smith Clover Road. I, I, I'm assuming, that's where Valley Avenue.
Yes, you're absolutely right, I remember.
It's either Estrada or Smith Clover.
Just checking, I wanna have it right for the minute, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Well, that was actually just a test to see if you're paying attention. You passed.
Of all people to test, really?
I know, well, you know, every now and then you gotta sneak it in. Okay, so board members, what are your thoughts?
He, doesn't matter what order.
Beg your pardon? Okay, Chris.
I'm just gonna, you know, I have a couple of things I need to say about this. First off, I agree with, you know, Chief Brazil's eloquent presentation of our last you know, how the risk of COVID, the new variants, you know, as I look today at the COVID rates of the state, Orange County is still the second highest COVID rate in the entire of New York State. I just think that, you know, I agree with Chief Brazil that this is not the time yet for these events, I think we need to get closer down to the one percent level of infection before we start sanctioning events, especially as a village, to be sanctioning such events. What private people wanna do on their own? I can't stop or I can't, I can only advise, but for a village to sanction an event like this will be part of or, or present an event, I would be completely against at this point, it's just not the time yet, when, and we're not ready for this yet. And that's how I feel.
Thanks, Chris. Tara?
I spoke, I've spoken to a bunch of people involved, including you Tim, because I wasn't in the meeting with We Are Woodbury. I asked representatives from We Are Woodbury very detailed questions because I shared in trustee Graziano's concerns. I do think they have a well thought out plan, this isn't like St. Patrick's Day where it's a mass gathering of people uncontrolled, I know that members of the group went to measure out Peroni Circle to see how many tables they could fit, where would they be located? It, it's, it's not something that wasn't thought through. And knowing Jorge and Alfredo, knowing their businesses and how their businesses are suffering. I, I, I'm not opposed to this because I do think it will help them, and, but I also would like to add, I don't think it should only be for them. So if you have other businesses, you know, you know, say A Better Place or Grand Mango or even Christie's if they wanted to open for the event. If people wanted to buy food there and then be seated in the circle, they should have that opportunity as well, so that it's not just for those two restaurants. So, you know, the signup genius, oh, one of my biggest concerns was the contact tracing, and if somebody does come back positive, how would, what, where, who was accountable for contact tracing, and there, I was assured there would be a list of names and numbers and somebody from We Are Woodbury would be contacting everyone. And they would not be permitted to sit down without providing their personal contact information if they're comfortable doing so. Tim, you and I spoke and we know that one of the areas where there you're not gonna be able to control is if people wanted to walk through. Cause it is a public street, it's a village road, you know, whether or not it's closed, it's like a, like a block party, you can still walk through it. So that's, that's an area of concern, but I, I think with all the other measures in place, it can be done safely.
Okay. Thank you Tara, why don't we go to Jesus?
I also agree that if done properly and they've really did their homework and making sure that everyone knows they're trying to do the best they can with what they have, and I think they could really pull it off, because it's a, it's a Cinco de Mayo is in the middle of the week, it's true, when most people are busy with their kids in school and stuff. So it's not like it was a weekend where everyone would come out. So signing up, having people sign up, checking the temperatures, I think have made a big difference in the outcome, so I have no problem with it, also, and I like Tara's idea about having the other establishments go in, also participate if they want to. And hopefully that can start bringing everyone together safely, of course, so I have no problem with it either.
Okay, thank you Jesus. Andrew?
I've also done my due diligence with this event, and I also hear trustee Graziano's concerns. I, I have all my trust in We Are Woodbury to safely pull this off, this event. Agree, it's in the middle of the week, it won't be as hectic as say the tree lighting was, where there was just a mass of humanity, I think you and I spoke about that, that it was kind of a perfect storm. People that were just hogtied for so long and looking for something to get done, you know, to do something. So I think this is gonna be a big boom for this community, I think it's gonna be great for the local businesses there. I also love Tara's suggestion about inviting the other local eateries into this event if they wish. So yeah, I'm all in favor of this.
Okay, um, so my thoughts, I'm torn on this, and I did attend that meeting with Jesus. I share Chris's concerns with regard to COVID. You know, we're not out of the woods yet, I know everybody's tired of it, I know everybody wants to move on, certainly I do. But we're not quite there yet, but on the other hand, this is, there were, we, I had several concerns about the St. Patrick's Day event, as did other board members. You know, wind instruments and the uncontrolled number of people, the day of the week that would bring a lot more people, the type of celebration, et cetera. This is not that though, you know, they, they did, they being We Are Woodbury, in my opinion, did learn from that event. And from that discussion, they're going to have tables that are separated, they're going to be a a specific number of people as opposed to an unlimited number of people. They're going to be doing temperature checks, although I am somewhat skeptical of, quite frankly, any civilian's ability to control people accessing and egressing an area that's on a public street and controlling temperature checks and things like that, but they do have a plan. You know, as Jesus said, this is a weekday evening, so it's not going to be a weekend where everybody's available. So, you know, with regard to drinking and things of that nature, you know, any of the existing restaurants in town can apply for outdoor dining right now, and as Kelly pointed out, those restaurants can serve alcohol in a limited capacity, is my understanding, without pulling up that wall in front of me. So they can do that, so, and, and this really wouldn't be much different than those restaurants applying for outdoor dining, the only difference is that they'd be setting up tables on the street that they had applied for a street closure for, as opposed to doing it in their parking lot. So I, you know, as, as Andrew said, he did his due diligence and I, and I've done mine, and I've had this long discussion with Tara yesterday, and I have spoken to Kelly about this, and I spoke to Kate about this, and so on. So, you know, there are some issues, but again, as I said earlier, I think that they've learned from the discussions and controversy that occurred during the St. Patrick's event. I would like to open this up to department heads, in particular, Chief Brazillo and Rob Wyatt, so Rob, why don't you go first?
The only question I had was, so the road closure is gonna be from thirty-two to Valley Avenue, closing Smith Clover Road, is that correct?
No, 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 Peroni Circle, I believe, I think the, it's just a circle.
I stated that incorrectly, Rob, my apologies, it's Peroni. Similar to where the tree lighting was, but instead there'll be, you know, tables spread out and so on.
Okay. I don't have any further questions.
Okay. Chief Brazillo, I know you're on, did you have anything on that?
No, Tim, I don't have anything on that.
Okay, thanks Pat. All right, so do any board members have any further, oh, actually, I did have one other thing, so the insurance to pay for this would be coming out of the new line item that does not appear in our budget until June first, we're nowhere near June first. So we would have to transfer money from an existing line item over to that line item. So Desiree, I'm looking at you with regard to your position as budget officer. Do we have the funds that we would need, not, of course, not knowing exactly what that would cost, but do we have the funds to transfer over to fit into the appropriate line item so as not to go awry of the law?
Well, I'm gonna need to call the insurance company and find out what questions that they may have with regards to what's involved with this, I'm thinking the alcohol may be an issue. Not just for our insurance company, but when they get their alcohol licenses from the ABC, it's usually restricted to within the building. And this will be not on their property, it'll be on village property, so I don't know how that will play in, the insurance company will have to let me know. But if that's the case, I'm sure they can party without alcohol, so.
Well, that's a really good point, you know, the restaurants that get outdoor dining permits from the building department, they're doing so on their own property. Kelly, what exposure, if any, would the village have with regard to alcohol or anything else for that matter, considering it's on our street?
It depends, but I think Desiree pointed out a really good point, that the insurance company would be interested in that and that may be a reason why the insurance may cost more. But it also may be a reason why people, you know, they're, they're purchasing food, my understanding is they're purchasing food from these restaurants and they're going and they're seating being seated at these places, they don't need to have alcohol with them. If they wanted the alcohol, they could have the margarita or the wood beer, whatever, at those restaurants. I just don't want, and I'm sure the insurance company doesn't want either, the village to be opened up to somebody doing that, but they're parked on this on a different street, and then they get in that car and they drive home, and there's really no monitoring of that, because you brought the drink from somewhere else.
So my question would be then, would we rely on both the state liquor authority and the insurance company to dictate terms with regard to the consumption of alcohol, or should we impose a stricter standard with regard to the consumption of alcohol in conjunction with a potential approval on this event?
I think that that is a policy decision for the board. Sorry.
Okay. All right, Kelly, you have anything else to guide us with?
Um, I don't think so, I mean, as long as the village is satisfied with the protocols that are put into place, there doesn't appear to be any issues with this, I think you hit the nail on the head with the publicity fund, I know I've already mentioned that to, to Desiree. And then you've talked about the costs that would be associated with it, insurance, whatever's needed for the associated road closure. I don't know if there's gonna be costs related to any policing, obviously that would be with the town, but the highway department would be with Rob, so.
Well, and that brings up another point that we didn't really discuss at all. Policing, do we need policing? Do that, well, do they need policing? If so, how's that being handled? I don't know the answer to either one of those questions. Especially if they need it, I mean, we were closing a road. The highway department handles that, I, I don't know, I mean, obviously the police would be made aware of what's going on, I'm sure they Rob has something to say about that, go ahead Rob.
Not, not about the policing, I do have one question I thought about, since we are gonna be serving probably a lot of food between the two restaurants or whatever restaurants participate, who's gonna be taking all the garbage away?
That's a good question, I don't know.
Yeah, I was, I asked that question of, of the, yeah, and they're cleaning up everything similar to the tree lighting.
Oh, where was that, where was that, all that garbage gonna be go, are we gonna put it in the village dumpsters or?
No, they're.
Okay, cause it's gonna be a lot.
Yeah, I agree, there's gonna be a lot of food waste and as well.
Also work that out with the restaurants.
I would imagine.
It would be on them.
They have their own carding contracts.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure they do, obviously, but they can get extra dumpsters or they can
Right.
You know, be responsible to.
It's not gonna be on your guys' role. What?
I, I don't even know why I said anything, I'm sorry.
All right, do any other board members have any comments or, or questions or thoughts?
I do need to know about the alcohol though, so when I call the insurance company tomorrow, I know what I'm telling them.
Right, so what I'm gonna do at this point is, I'm gonna ask for a motion either way. And in that motion, if it's a motion to approve, we do need to address the alcohol one way or another, either we're gonna allow it or we're not gonna allow it, I guess really is the question, right Desiree?
Well, one thing, in the meeting that we have with Kate and Jorge, he did say that he's, he's getting his lawyer to get involved and get the license for them, and also whatever extra insurance he might need, so that he can serve the alcohol outside. So it would all fall on Jorge, basically.
Well, it wouldn't necessarily all fall on Jorge, because it is on our street as opposed to. So we're talking about the possibility of a, of a restriction over and above what the SLA might say or anybody else.
Not only that, if he makes any changes to his license, that has to go before you would be approved at a, at a board, well, not approved, but it has to be like we've done in the past, you've seen liquor being mentioned, and you don't meet again till after Cinco de Mayo.
That's not really gonna.
No, and if he gets any extra insurance, he would have to list the village as additional insured, to be even, to even cover us to begin with.
And Mayor, to answer your question before, I have absolutely no idea what the insurance company is gonna say. You know, and tell me it's gonna be amazing amount of money, may come back and say it's gonna be not a lot of money, I.
That's, that's the other concern, I mean, we'd be looking for an approval here or not without knowing really what it would cost. Now, we, if I recall, we budgeted for that publicity line item. I think it was five grand for the fiscal year, right?
Yep.
So, I mean, what if we ate up five grand just in this one insurance, but I don't think that's likely, but it's, you know, I don't know. If anybody has an idea of what this insurance policy might cost, speak up now, so we have an idea.
I don't know, but what, where, what, what about the coverage for Rob's guy's time and everything, where, where's that gonna go, who's paying for that?
That has to be addressed also, I don't know if you want, that wanted to come out of that line item too?
Which I, I understood it was coming out of that line item, to be honest with you, which is why I didn't bring it up earlier, but it's, it's, what is it, like two or three hundred dollars for the, for the overtime for that, a couple hours, right? Two hundred dollars?
Two employees, two employees. So, yeah, probably, probably like three hundred.
Okay, yeah, that's what I remember from the last time we discussed this. Okay, so there'd be three hundred plus the cost of the insurance that would be borne out of the line item from the budget that we'd have to transfer money from an existing line item to the unpopulated line now. Anything else?
No, it just seems like we don't have an idea of cost, but whatever.
And quite frankly, we can't get an idea of cost tonight, and we have to vote on it tonight. There's no other meeting before this event.
Can we ask them for, to split or to pay? I mean, that's.
Oh, we, we could, but this isn't a workshop, so we really can't even.
No, no, not now, I'm saying, if we approve it or don't, if we approve it and we figure it's too much money. You can say, hey, we'll meet you halfway.
Yeah, well, why don't we do this, if we're going to approve it, we could approve it with a cap.
Okay.
And then say anything over that would be contingent upon you know, whoever paying, We Are Woodbury and gang, or you know, however you wanna, excuse me, phrase it.
Okay. Desiree, do you remember how much the last one was and that one didn't include alcohol?
So when I last spoke to the insurance company, he said it would be about between two fifty and three hundred dollars. But that was just for, to close the road and a parade to occur on that short distance of, cause that's the only thing we had so far that I called about. I honestly, Kelly would have no idea, cause never, I've never had an event that was missable that include alcohol. Couldn't even tell you how much it would possibly cost. Or how, I mean, it could be nothing, I don't know, I, I honestly don't know, I'm sorry.
Why don't, why don't we just take the alcohol out of the equation?
Honestly, I was leaning toward that, the alcohol is a concern of mine too, I mean, mostly because we'd be setting a precedent for any village sponsored event on village property, but we did it there, why aren't we doing it here, kinda thing, we have to be consistent. And we have to consider all village locations, all village property. And we have to consider all village locations, all village property.
Have we, have you ever Desiree, have you ever priced an event like this before where there's food involved and serving of food and because, you know, this
Desiree, you're muted.
Sorry, sorry. I was just gonna say perhaps Chief Prizzillo can give us an idea, he recalls, because not so long ago the firemen had their parade here in Woodbury and the firemen had a food and alcohol event as part of that.
But that was on private property.
It was on private property, but maybe they'll at least have an idea of how much that would cost. Also, a couple of years ago, during one of the We Are Woodbury Community Day events, Central Valley Fire Company had a beer garden, if I remember correctly. So maybe someone, I know Mrs. Hunter's involved with was involved with that. I don't know. Maybe, Pat, do you know anything about any ideas?
Uh, I know we took out an insurance rider for the day. Or I believe for the weekend for that event. I don't recall the exact cost of it because we carry that insurance rider all year round for any event that we have, rather than calling for specifics. And then as far as additional costs for road closures and everything else, we didn't pay that cost. I don't know if it's because we are, you know, an emergency service. We didn't pay it, but, you know, I think everyone in town pays enough tax dollars to begin with, and if they wanna have an event, why do they have to pick up the cost for, you know, highway closures and police? You know, to be present down there, it's put our tax money towards it. We're already paying it, you know, that's just my opinion. But as far as price wise goes, you know, for the insurance rider, I don't have an exact cost in there, and I don't think the number was astronomical, to be honest with you.
That's the information we needed. And to, you know, that's exactly why we created this line item in the first place. Because I think the board agrees with that statement that the taxpayer already pays for that in some way, shape and form through tax dollars. I think the issue here is the alcohol. That's the question that we need to address. And that's what we need to include in any motions.
But is is that something different from the dining that Monroe does with the alcohol outside? Was this the same?
Alcohol on the street and B, it's my, I don't know. No, honestly, it's not too different from what I understand what they do, but I don't know. I don't know what they do with regard, excuse me, to alcohol or insurance. Andrew, you had something?
Yeah, can we inject, can we inject Kate Luciani into the conversation for a second?
I, Kelly?
You certainly can ask her to speak. She might have more information on
Uh, well, it's well, everything we've been talking about, it's, you know, the insurance, the alcohol, she can address some of that.
Okay, Kate, you wanna talk about it?
Hey, Tim, sure. Can you guys hear me? Am I coming through clear?
You are, go ahead.
Okay, great. So I talked to Monroe a lot about their outdoor dining experience. I talked with Tony and Sal and Christine, who do the Monroe Downtown Revitalization. So what they do is the stores have to get, they have to go to the Liquor Authority. They have to show when the road's closed and the Liquor Authority then gives a permit so they can then have the alcohol outside. I don't know anything about it costing more through the insurance. I know that Jorge is working with his lawyer, who's going through the Liquor Authority and that if we show that the road will be closed, then he can have, you know, alcohol out there. I understand that there might be a difference in insurance. If there is, then I'm sure We Are Woodbury could help pay whatever difference that is compared to what you guys would pay without it. And I'm trying to think of what else. But yeah, oh, and the other thing is so Monroe, I mean, when they have theirs, it's on their main road. You know, there it's on Lake Street, that's owned by, you know, their town, their village. And I, you know, like I said, they're allowed to have alcohol on it, so I don't know so much the difference between having it in Peroni Circle outside Jorge's as it is to Monroe. So that's just my two cents about it, you know, and like I said, anything we can help with this to help, you know, Jorge Alfredo, you know, a better play, anybody who wants to be involved in this, you know, Cinco de Mayo, we would love to be able to help out, so.
Thanks for that clarification. I don't think there's a difference between what the restaurants are doing on that village road. I think it's just a difference of the possibility of a tolerance of risk on our part versus what they're looking to do. So I'm curious what you know, did, do you know if the SLA already told Jorge that as long as the village road is closed, no problem, or that was just part of a discussion?
Yes, as long as so Jorge spoke to his lawyer and his lawyer spoke to Liquor Authority, as long as you guys approve that that road will be closed, they just have to prove that you're closing the road. His lawyer brings it back to Liquor Authority and give them the permit to have the alcohol outside. And it's the same thing that, like I said, Monroe does. Monroe had three different restaurants that were allowed to provide alcohol. It has to be a certain feet outside of their restaurant in their business, and they had that on Lake Road.
I would, I would just, I would just think the big distinction is who is providing the insurance for that. Is the private entities providing the insurance with the villages or the town of Monroe is additionally insured or is Monroe pulling the insurance and taking on the risk if somebody gets in a car crash or somewhere? That's my, that's the big distinction.
So Monroe's Chamber of Commerce is actually the one who does the outdoor dining experience. They've paid for all this along with the Monroe Downtown Revitalization Committee. The two of them together have come together and done those outdoor dining experiences. And, you know, from us, like when we started, We Are Woodbury, that was a big thing that we that we would like to do for Woodbury to be able to help businesses during COVID. I mean, Monroe's been doing it over a year and, you know, we kind of sat there and we didn't do it. And then when Jorge asked us after the Christmas tree lighting if we could help him do this for Cinco de Mayo, we felt now's our chance. Let's do something for Woodbury. You know, numbers are going down. We've tried everything that we can. We went down there, we measured tables. We were able to measure between 10 to 12 feet apart from tables, so people aren't near each other. We're limiting the amount of people coming in. Like I said, we would take temperatures, we would have people reserve tables, we'll have extra tables if people wanna come. You know, we're just trying to come up with whatever solution we can to be able to do something in Woodbury and follow in the tracks of Monroe. I mean, like I said, Monroe's been doing this for a year. And even if it takes us getting together and maybe sitting down and talking with Monroe about how they do it, I feel like that's a great way to go about it than just saying no. You know, I think we can work it out and we can help our businesses also. We can help our restaurants. We can help people grow during this time and, you know, to just shut it down without
Kate, I don't wanna turn this into a whole presentation and or a public hearing. I hear what you're saying. We just honestly, I think we, I'm uncomfortable with even having members of the public speak during the regular board meeting, but we, if we need any other answers to any questions, does anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, just do one more for Kelly, because isn't technically the Chamber of Commerce not a government entity? So that would be a private entity.
There's, there's an argument that some are considered quasi, but yeah, for the most part, they are not a government entity, no. In fact, most of them are just not for profit.
Yeah, so that shifts liability.
I have one more question for Kate. Can you remind us of the number of people that you're gonna have at each seating, please?
So we set it up that we would have, each table would have six seats in it. And we wouldn't allow over 120 people at that time.
At each seating?
So it would depend. There might be a table that comes with two people that wanna go like on a date. And then we might have another table that might have six people and their family. So it all depends on who's gonna reserve those areas.
What would the maximum number of people be per seating?
Oh, per seating?
Yeah.
So for a family, I think we said six.
Total, how many tables then?
So we said 20 tables.
Okay.
Between 10 to 12 feet apart.
Okay.
So I think she means it's a potential of 120 people at one time.
Right, that's what I was trying to get to. I was just trying to get the math spelled out so that it would be clear to everybody. All right. Does anyone have any other questions for Kate? Okay, thank you, Kate, for providing some additional input on that. We appreciate it. Okay, thank you. So then with that said, I'm looking for a motion either to approve or deny this with any stipulations with regard to liquor and or insurance caps.
I'll make that motion.
What motion is that?
To approve the permit issuing?
With any stipulations?
No.
No.
Just open ended.
Open ended.
And we cover the insurance.
We cover the insurance.
No matter the cost. Just trying to spell it out to be clear. That's what I was asking. Okay. All right, so that was a motion to approve the request with no stipulations on drinking and or insurance by Trustee Jacomaz. Do we have a second?
A secondative, making sure that they get the permit for the liquor.
Well, it's a different condition. That's a different motion.
Different motion.
So
We've now got two motions.
Get to two motions at once, so we either need a second on this motion or we move on.
I don't think it should be unlimited. There has to be a cap. We can, I'm just saying
I understand, I understand, so we
Does somebody wanna second the motion?
Thank you. So Trustee Gomez seconded the motion. Now, please, Tara, go with your comments.
I think that there should be a cap because they can come back and say it's $5,000 for this one event for insurance and that, to me, I don't think it's fair to the taxpayers. I think that, I don't know that we have to have a dollar amount tonight, Kelly. I don't know if you can comment on that. Can it be contingent, well, not to exceed $1,000 total cost?
If we're gonna limit it, we're gonna have to put a dollar amount.
Okay, I say no more than $1,000.
Including the highway time or just $1,000 on the insurance cost?
Well, somebody just put in the chat that We Are Woodbury will pay for the highway time, so total, all costs.
Okay, so then, okay, I hear what you're saying. Any other discussion on this vote or this motion, rather? Andrew, you had your hand up?
Why don't I withdraw the motion and make a new motion with the cap, with the money cap amount on there?
Kelly, do we need to vote this motion down before we do a new motion?
Jesus, do you want to withdraw your second?
Yes.
Nope, you can't.
I'm waiting on that.
My internet connection went down for a second. I missed all of that from Tara.
Oh, I said the cap should be, well, well, Kelly asked if you're gonna withdraw your second. And then we're gonna introduce a new motion. Sorry.
There are people speaking again, so for one person, please go ahead.
Andrew is looking to withdraw his motion.
Okay.
Do you withdraw your second? Because he's going to make a modified motion.
Oh, okay, so then Andrew withdraw, or excuse me, Jesus withdraws his second, so the motion fails, and then we can move on to a new motion, correct, Kelly?
Well, the motion is withdrawn, so now you can make a new motion.
Andrew, do you have another motion to make?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the permit, the issuance of a permit for We Are Woodbury for Cinco de Mayo with a cap on costs at $1,000. Or should I do the thing with the million dollars?
No, I think 1,000 would be more appropriate than a million. Any restrictions on liquor?
Uh, no.
Okay, so Andrew's motion is that we approve the Cinco de Mayo event for We Are Woodbury with a cap to the village of $1,000. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second it, but I have a question after that.
Okay, so Jesus seconded the motion, so discuss it.
Total costs.
Which would be insurance. We Are Woodbury is gonna pick up the highway costs.
Oh, okay, so yes, okay.
What is the village going to do should those costs exceed $1,000?
Excellent question.
They would pick up the, assuming that We Are Woodbury picking up the remaining balance, if any.
Okay, and then if they don't, then the permit
Doesn't get issued or gets revoked, then, yeah.
I mean, we have Kate and Teresa there. If you wanna ask them if they're okay with that.
All right now.
No, so.
I also want to clarify, there's no permit being issued. You're just approving this event. We don't have an actual permit that we issue.
You're right.
Just to clarify.
Well, that's the motion and the second. Any other discussion before we vote on this motion?
Yeah, I just think we're taking too way too much liability on the alcohol as a as a village.
Anything else? Okay.
Can I ask a question before we vote?
Yes, Tara.
Is there a way that we can speak to the insurance company to understand what our liability is? And then no, you can vote it with a condition. That if the village assumes all of the liability, should there be an accident or any anything related to alcohol use, then we don't issue the street closure. Or we limit the alcohol and say no alcohol, instead of saying no event because of the alcohol.
Well, that's what I was asking before, both with both of the motions that we just discussed, do we wanna restrict alcohol?
I'm not saying restrict. I wanna hear from the insurance company what liability we have, if any. I don't, I don't know that if somebody gets in their car and is drinking and gets in an accident, is that on the village? I don't know that. I'm not an insurance carrier.
I think, and I'm sure Kelly, as an attorney, can, you know, tune in. People sue you whether whether you have insurance or not. I mean, we got sued by somebody who went down the ramp off of off of 17, which we don't own, maintain, or have anything to do with, but they sued us because of how it was designed.
And then the village has to defend it, so you do incur costs that way. But yeah, you sue. If you have an action, you do sue anybody that you can to see basically what sticks.
Okay, well, then I'm not in favor of adding alcohol.
Okay, so the, but the present motion that is
We're gonna need to vote, so we need to vote on this motion one way or another that would include alcohol. And then if it's defeated, then we can go on with another motion if we want to. We could do this all night long.
No, we don't wanna do this all night long.
Any other discussion before we call a vote? Okay, so then I'm calling a vote. Desiree, can you do a roll call, please?
I can. Mayor Egan?
I'm gonna vote no because of the alcohol.
Trustee Barrick?
Yes.
Yeah, Trustee Jacomaza?
Yes.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Graziano?
Absolute no.
So just to clarify, this is including the alcohol, cost not to exceed $1,000 for the insurance. And We Are Woodbury are paying the overtime on the highway department and anything over the $1,000 for the insurance.
Correct, that's my understanding.
I'll make sure I have it right for the record, because it went a little crazy there for a bit.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, okay, let's move on then. So that's a 3-2 to approve, moving on. Right? Good. Okay. Brutal slate of officers for 2021 for the fire chiefs. Looking for a motion and a second to approve the 2021 Fire Chief Slate as presented by Charles Canute, Woodbury Fire Department Secretary. Pasquale Prizzillo for Fire Chief, Christopher Burke for First Assistant Fire Chief, and Scotty McLennan for Second Assistant Fire Chief.
Make the motion.
Trustee Jacomaz with the motion, Trustee Barrick with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, next up is an authorization for the mayor to sign a stormwater maintenance agreement. Looking for a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to sign the stormwater control facility maintenance agreement with 230 Scunamunk LLC, the facility owner of 190 Scunamunk Road, Congregation Olive Shalom D.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jacomaz with the motion, Trustee Barrick with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I am.
Okay, the state pollutant discharge elimination system, otherwise known as Speedy's permanent procedures, requires the village as an operator of regulated municipal separate storm sewer system in MS4, file an annual report to maintain permit coverage. The draft of the annual report for the period ending March 9, 2021, has been posted to the website for public information and comment. The report complies with the DEC mandatory format. The final report will be filed with the state prior to June 1, 2021 deadline. Next up, we need to schedule a special meeting for interviews. So we need to interview applicants for the zoning board of appeals and for the planning board. So before I ask for a motion, let's have a brief discussion as to when we wanna do that. Anyone have any thoughts?
What?
That's the question.
I believe there were four applicants in total. Is that correct, Desiree?
Either four or five. I don't
There's at least four. It might be five, but I'm pretty sure it's four, so.
You know what? I have it on my flash drive. Let me pull it up while you guys are looking.
And the reason I wanted to clarify that is because of the amount of time that we may or may not need. So I think we'll probably need So I think we'll probably need 15 minutes per applicant. So call it five. So that's an hour 15. We could theoretically do it before the next board meeting if we wanted to get on early or we could do it on another night. So either the 13th, well, actually, do we have time if we do it on May 13th or we need to do it before that?
Sorry, you had me looking it up. There were, it was five pages, but it was four applicants. This one applicant's page was two pages long. So there's four applicants. If you, 13th of May, yeah, there's time because there's an extra Thursday in April.
We'd only need an hour before, so we could start at like six o'clock on May 13th. That's, I'm just throwing that out there. Or we could do something.
I'm good with that. That'll work.
Good thing. I, I kind of like that myself, only because we don't have to do another night that we have to check schedules for.
May 13th, Thursday, the next meeting night.
Correct. Chris, you go.
At 6:00 PM?
You know, if you don't mind me shoving my face, no, that's fine.
I'd probably be doing.
I bet I gotta eat.
Tara?
That's fine.
Okay. So with that said, then I'm looking for a motion and a second to schedule a special meeting to be held on May 13th at 6:00 PM to interview individuals that submitted letters of interest to serve on the planning board and the zoning board of appeals.
And what time are we doing that?
Six o'clock.
Six?
Thank you trustee Derek for the motion. Can I have a second, please? Trustee Jacque Maza with the second. Any discussion? Or further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Jesus and Chris?
Yeah, I'm a no on that one.
You're no?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's four, one then. Will you be available? You said you'd be.
Yeah, I'll be available.
Okay.
Just not thrilled with it, but I'll be there.
Okay.
I'll put bells on.
You're going to have bells on or you want to have bells?
I won't. No.
Okay, you will not have bells. Thank you. Letter of support for the Greenway grant for Orange County. So I'm looking for a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support for a Greenway compact community grant that's being applied for by County of Orange. They're applying for the grant to update their open space plan.
Make the motion.
Trustee Gomez with the motion, trustee Derek with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. And we have two extra items. First is a request for proposals for zoning board of appeals attorneys. I'm looking for a motion and a second to advertise for proposals for the position of the attorney for the zoning board of appeals.
I'll make that motion.
Second, Jacque Maza with the motion, trustee Graziano with the second. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Second extra item is a request for a letter of support for Hudsonia Limited. But Sonya Limited in partner with the Hudson River Estuary Program is offering a no cost training and technical assistance opportunity for communities in the 10 county Hudson River Estuary watershed that wish to designate a critical environmental area, always known as a CEA. Hudsonia and Estuary Program staff will guide a working group of community representatives through the steps necessary to identify, delineate, and describe a CEA and to seek adoption by the municipality. Assistance will be provided with drafting the map and description for proposed CEA. There's going to be two communities selected out of all of the applicants, and we hope to be one of these communities. So I'd like to ask for a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support to accompany the CEA application.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Derek with the motion, trustee Graziano, that I see your hand with the second. Any discussion? Just want to point out that trustee Derek asterisk, and I think it's a great idea.
It was through Mr. Kraus.
Yes, thank you Neil for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay, so that concludes regular business. We can now go out to the public for public comment. So let's start with Betzumus.
I'm good. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Beth. Brandon Calori?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to see if I can put this the right way. I'm definitely looking forward to the Cinco de Mayo celebration. I want to make that very clear. I think it's great for the local businesses. I live a minute down the road, so I will be walking down there and enjoying all the great food that Jorge's and Viva has to offer. But there's just the concern about the taxpayer money. And in the future, I know that a lot of these events were spoken about months ago about that We Are Woodbury wants to, wants to do. I would just like to have more time because there seem to be a lot of questions. And in the future, I just hope that the events that come up can be brought up a little bit earlier, just so that all the questions can be addressed prior to it. And that's my only concern. But I am looking forward to it. I think it's a great event. And I think it's great for the local businesses.
Thanks, Brandon. I, I actually agree with what you said, and I was actually thinking earlier that we may need to discuss at a meeting the possibility of bringing these things up in, in a workshop. Uh, we have a different meeting specifically as a workshop for these types of events because, simply because, you know, Jesus and I attended that meeting. But I think more questions came up tonight than Jesus and I had collectively at that meeting that, you know, we had a great deal of difficulty answering and quite frankly, struggling with.
Yeah, and again, you know, it's a great idea. I want to make that very clear.
I think it's a terrific idea, and I want to see it succeed as well. I, I'm just concerned about the alcohol and insurance as well. And without knowing the exact cost, I mean, I, I was torn on that one. I really was. I, I do want to see this event succeed, and I'm looking forward to seeing it go.
Well, I know that We Are Woodbury did put out a litany of calendar events months ago, months ago, about what some of the ideas they had, and a lot of them were great ideas. So maybe in the future, any event that they want to do can be held with maybe another, a meeting in between.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Just to discuss these kind of things because there were, I mean, that was, that was a lot. I mean, let's not kid ourselves. There was a lot of questions. There was a lot of unknowns. And I just think it's better for Joe Tax, Joe and Josephine taxpayer to, you know, have those answers ahead of time for the board to have those answers ahead of time. And this way it can be either tabled for the next meeting so that they can get those answers. Or, you know, just a little bit more time. I think that's really the only thing I'm asking for. It's just a little bit more information, a little bit more time that we can address those things. Which, I mean, you guys came up with a ton of questions, and I commend the entire village board on that. Uh, coming up with all those ideas and all those angles. So it was just something that I'd like to have a little bit more time on. That's my only concern. But I'm definitely looking forward to the event. I can tell you that.
I agree with you, and I, I, you know, I'd like to get together with Kate and Teresa and anybody else from We Are Woodbury to discuss the rest of the events for the year so that we can try and put together a workshop where we can discuss these things with. Honestly, I felt like we were rushed into a decision because we don't have any other meetings before this event.
Yes, unfortunately, that's the case.
Yeah, and it was the case. And, and we were trying to do our best to consider everything and, you know.
I think you guys did a great job considering everything. I really do. I commend the village board on that.
You have any other comments on any other?
That'll be all tonight, Mayor. Thank you very much. And I'm looking forward to seeing everybody at the Cinco de Mayo.
Thanks, Brandon. Elon, anything?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Elon. Kate?
No, thank you.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Mrs. Hunter?
Done this time. Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, thanks. Martha? Okay, Ray Hernandez. Oh, wait, Martha unmuted. Do you have anything, Martha? She muted again.
Uh, no, not at this time.
I just wanted to give you the opportunity. Ray Hernandez?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Mr. or Mrs. Kraus?
No, we're good, Tim. Thank you.
Thanks, Robyn. Teresa Longo?
Um, behalf of We Are Woodbury, we would like to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to host the first Cinco de Mayo event in Woodbury.
Thanks, Teresa. Let's work together to make this a great event.
Yes, thank you.
Tracy? Excuse me.
Hi, yes, good evening, and I would like to make a comment if I could.
You can. Go ahead.
Okay, great. So I just wanted to thank the village board for their support for the blood drive that was done two weeks ago. It was wonderful and successful, very bittersweet. My son Andrew and I both appreciate very much our ability to be there and volunteer. Big shout out to Jesus and, and Andrew, who were there much longer than probably before and way after I and Andrew left. For all of their support. I, I also want to say thank you to John Hand from the village, who was the first donor, followed very closely by Tim Egan. And Jesus was in the middle of the day and Andrew closed it up with his donation. And it was our honor to be there and to have a small part in the day. And we thank you very much for honoring our Tony in that way, and we're very grateful. So thank you.
Thank you for your wonderful comments, Tracy. And I want you to notice the red heart that Desiree threw up. With regard to your comments, that was very nice. Okay, did I miss anybody in the public that has anything to say before we move on to department heads? Okay, let's go to Desiree.
Oh, hi. I just, I, I don't usually go first. So I just want to say that yesterday was administrative assistance, formerly known as secretary's day, now sometimes called administrative professional day. And I just want to recognize those individuals that work for the village at capacity. So of course I have to start with my office, which is Jessica McLennan and Claudia Will lawyer, Ramon Asen. And then you have the building department, which is Maria Rubio, Marian Tapaldo, and Jennifer Potter. And in the highway department, Sheila Beetle, and in the water sewer department, Jean Monday. The supportive staff to your departments is pivotal and very important for the operation of your government, and it's nice that they are recognized during the month of April.
Thank you, Desiree. And you are absolutely right. I was jumping ahead, looking forward to the end of the meeting, and I forgot the board. So, board member comment, my apologies. Uh, so as Tracy said, first, I want to thank trustees Jacque Maza and Gomez for coordinating what turned out to be a very successful blood drive on Saturday the 10th. As Tracy pointed out, I had one of the earliest appointments, and the room was already packed with donors. It was a really nice thing to see. This was a terrific event honoring two outstanding members of the community, Mike Hanson and Tony Najio. I'm sure they were smiling down on us on that day, on that Saturday. It was a really nice event. Also on the 10th was another successful electronic recycling and shredding event hosted by the village highway department. So it's Rob's turn. Thank you to Rob and his crew for once again taking on this challenging and helpful community recycling event, recycling their old computers, batteries, and other electronic devices, as well as shredding their sensitive documents. So as always, it was greatly appreciated. Thank you to Rob and his crew. Lastly, warmer weather is just about here, although we did have snow flurries earlier in the afternoon. That was a little nutty. And the daylight hours are getting longer each day. So as a result, there's more people out walking their dogs, kids riding bikes, residents enjoying the weather, sitting in their driveways, et cetera. So just please be aware of pedestrians as you drive through the community. The speed limit's 30 miles an hour on village streets. And this is especially important during warmer weather, just to keep everybody safe. So please respect your neighbors and respect your fellow residents. That's all I have. So let's go down to the end of the dais with trustee Graziano. I'm getting ready for when we actually are at the dais.
Yeah, hopefully very soon, but we'll see where that goes. Um, well, I want to thank everybody for attending tonight and for the spirited discussion. I think there was a lot of good discussion tonight. I've been doing a lot of thinking these days about a few things. The first is about the state of our country and how we're so divided. And I've come to the realization, this is not just a national thing. It has also affected our, our very community in a very negative way. When we think a pandemic would have brought us closer together, but alas, it has not. I fell in love with this community when our family first moved here six years ago, especially how people reacted and took care of each other. People I had just met for the first time had helped me register my son in school, welcomed my family with open arms, and some even plowed the driveway for my wife during the first winter storm when I was away on a business trip. These were people I had just met, and I was overjoyed how Woodbury was such a wonderful and caring place. Unfortunately, as they have nationally, things have begun to spiral downward. People have taken sides, people have adopted agendas, and the one Woodbury I knew and loved has begun to fray. I must admit for a bit, I also fell into this trap, but I soon realized that together we can accomplish so much more than we can apart. I've learned from my mistakes, and I feel I'm a better person for it, and I hope we can all do the same. I have volunteered my service to this community to help improve things and to help continue making our beloved one Woodbury, one Woodbury, a wonderful place for our children and our future. Now is the time to put past feelings and agendas behind us and work together for the common good. Elections will come and go, and there will always be elections, but they didn't have to create enemies as they have seemed to have done in the past few years. Once the people have spoken and the votes are counted, the time for pride and ego is over, and the time begins for us to roll up our sleeves and collaborate with each other to make our one Woodbury the absolute best it can be. I make this pledge to all of you, and I hope others are ready to do the same. Lastly, I'll leave everyone with this. I love all the volunteerism. I love the community pride in what we're doing, and I would encourage everyone who wants to participate. I will however say though, that volunteerism ceases to become an altruistic thing the moment people expect something in return. If there's the need for constant recognition or credit for reaching every act that is not truly altruism or community service, that is quid pro quo. Do things because they are the right things. Volunteer because helping others is thanks enough. Give because you realize how fortunate you have it compared to others, not for accolades in return. There is no need to compete, no need to put others down. And there are certainly enough opportunities for us all to help better someone else's life. We are one Woodbury. It's time to start acting that way and working together. There is more than enough to go around for all to participate. Pay it forward, as one day you may need something done for you in return. When we work selflessly for our community together, we can accomplish so much more than we can with any competition. I challenge all to leave the ego at the door and step forward to, step forward together for the benefit of us all. Be the one Woodbury I fell in love with. Be the one Woodbury I know we all can be. Good night, Woodbury. Stay healthy and be good.
Very well said, Chris. Thanks for that. Trustee Gomez?
Okay, um, thank you all for coming out tonight. Thank you again to our department heads and all the village employees, everyone. I just wanted to start saying that in this climate of hate, whether it be race, religion, sexual orientation, et cetera, please, I urge everyone to be kind and treat others as you would want to be treated. Remember, respect is earned, not demanded from others. And take responsibility for your actions. Don't blame everyone else for your bad choices. I always say to my children as they go off into the world, God bless, I love you and make good choices. Let's see if together as one community, we can bring peace and love to one another. Again, good night. God bless and make good choices.
Thank you, Jesus. Trustee Derek?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for watching this evening. Today is a day every child's classroom celebrates and educates our kids about. It's Earth Day. My four-year-old daughter Lily came home from school with a globe that she made out of paper plates and paint with cardboard tags hanging from it, which represented action items we can all take in our everyday lives in order to help preserve the earth. Lily made me promise, as she's going to hold me to it, that I would do my part to help keep the earth safe and clean because it's what responsible people do. Those are her words. If a four-year-old understands the importance of this day and recognizes that responsible people do what they can to preserve the earth and its natural resources, we all should be able to understand its importance. I've spoken about this in the past, but think it is worth mentioning once again. This village board takes the preservation of our environment and natural resources very seriously, and it has been at the top of our agenda since day one of the five of us working together. We have made changes to our code, created preservation committees, empowered an environmental conservation commission, passed a water protection act that is the most comprehensive water protection law in all of Orange County. Uh, last week, we passed a resolution by this board to request that the village of Woodbury be designated a Greenway community. And most recently tonight, you see two items on our agenda that further our initiatives. A letter of support for the Orange County Greenway Council, along with a letter, letter of support for the village to receive technical training as a critical environmental area. The preservation of the environment in all of its glory is the one area every member of this board seems to agree on. So today on Earth Day, I'd like to celebrate our accomplishments and as an environmentally friendly board and set our sights on future goals for developing even more protective measures. As leaders in this community, I thank my fellow board members for always striving to be better in this area and for trying to make every day Earth Day here in the village of Woodbury. Thank you, everyone. Stay well and be safe.
Thank you, Tara. And trustee Jacque Maza? Thank you, Tara. And trustee Jacomaza?
Apparently, our lousy internet has consumed a few more victims. So um, anyway, thank you all for joining us this evening. Uh, Wednesday, April twenty first, was officially Administrative Professionals Day. This day aims to recognize those that provide the necessary support for workplaces like a municipality to operate smoothly. As you may have realized, there has been a great turnover of turnover on the village board over the last three elections. This board said goodbye to Mayor Michael Queenen, Tom Flood, and the first trustee Neil Kraus. In walks four new trustees, trustees that have the work and community experience to make a difference in their jobs. But may not know how government actually works. It truly is a baptismal by fire. Every day, even in my third year, continues to be a learning experience. Thankfully, this transition to political life has been made easier by our village clerks. We are truly blessed to have Desiree Potvin, uh Jessica McLennan, and our newest addition Claudia Valloy Romanson. Romanson? I apologize, Claudia. As you could see by the agendas put forth, this has been an extremely busy board. We have asked a lot of our village clerks, and they have responded exceptionally. I personally asked a lot of our clerks attempting to get residents' answers, and they always come through. More importantly, they always have a smile for you when you drop into village hall. So the, from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank Jessica, Claudia, and the fast-rising favorite Desiree for helping me help our community. On a final note, on April tenth, the village board held its second annual Michael Hanson Blood Drive. This year in honor of Tony Maggio. We have a few people to thank, and let me start by thanking Mayor Egan and my fellow board members, our clerks, department heads, and our fire personnel. Including our chiefs who helped promote this event. I especially want to thank my brother from another mother, Jesus Gomez, who was there with me from seven A M. to almost six P M., making sure the place was cleaned up. There is no better person I would rather spend the day with than my friend. All our residents took the time to donate when the need is so great. Uh, in total, ninety-eight pints were collected. It was a wonderful showing for, uh, it was a wonderful showing by our community to honor those Woodbury's public servants. I also want to thank Colleen Pierce, as always, when above and beyond in providing food for the donors. Uh, the patron saint of Woodbury does it again. Finally, I would be remiss if I did not thank both the Hanson and Maggio families. Tony uh and Tracy's son Andrew were, well, Tracy and their son, Tony and Tracy's son Andrew was a huge help. Directing traffic and chatting it up with our donors and the New York Blood Center staff. On a personal note, it was an emotional day for Tracy Maggio. Friends came from Pennsylvania and from New Jersey to donate and or just lend support. There was a moment for me when Tracy was talking with Carrie Hanson, uh, Michael Hanson's youngest daughter, about their shared losses. Tough moments, the everyday reminders, and you must carry on. The reminder that you must carry on and always remember. We here in Woodbury will always remember these two fine gentlemen and thank them for their contributions to our community. And that's it.
Thank you, Andrew. Uh, okay, so now, since I jumped ahead and went to Desiree before I went to the board members, now we can get to the department heads. So Rob Wyatt?
I don't have anything, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Just sending something to Desiree quick. Okay, so Chief Brazillo?
Um, nothing much or uh different to report. We are uh done with our quarantine at the far, a firehouse from the members that tested positive. Passed uh two, two Mondays ago, we resumed uh the drills back up again. Uh, call wise, it's been pretty busy and getting busier as the warmer weather approaches. Um, and then as far as uh progress with the ladder truck, um, you know, with the uh. Uh, the funeral and everything in Rockland, uh, that was our next uh trip down to Rockland to look at a few trucks that already ordered to get ideas. Um, but probably next week we'll pick back up with that. Uh, other than that, we've been uh pretty steady. So just uh thank you guys for the support.
Thanks, but you're still platooning the drills on Mondays, right?
Yes, we are. Uh, we have uh A and B, and we're alternating, and um I. Foresee that happening and staying like that for quite some time. Um, obviously, that means each member is, you know, their drill. Um, you know, uh, their drills throughout the year get cut in half because they're only attending two rather than four. But we have unlimited uh access to drills and training classes online. Which is very convenient because you can kind of do it at your own pace and take as many as you want, and. I got to compliment the members. They've been very proactive. You know, probably have a dozen members a week taking classes online, which is uh real good to see.
I uh, I posted a picture recently of you with my son from seven years ago doing bailout training downstairs. That was a a a nice memory.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, we uh, there's a lot we got to catch up on, you know, so uh we're just. Doing our best to keep our head above water with the training and uh OSHA and NFPA uh standards and requirements.
Right. Well, doing a good job under trying circumstances, so thank you.
All right. Well, thank you.
I do not see Mickey, any of any department heads I missed. I don't believe so. Kelly, you have any final thoughts before we move on?
Well, Tara kind of beat me to it. I was going to say happy Earth Day. Um, but I did want to update the board on that note, since it is Earth Day, that your resolution from the last meeting um to to request the designation as a. Uh, Greenway community was sent up to the Council on Conservancy, and they're going to take that up at their meeting in June.
Excellent.
Thank you. And happy Earth Day.
Happy Earth Day. So with no further business to discuss or comments received, can I please have a motion and a second to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Derek with the motion, trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? I would, I. Thank you, everybody. Good night. See you all at the attorney's.